Welcome to the Cambridge Day and CCTV City Council Candidate Forum. This is our second cohort of the day. To offer a disclaimer before we begin, we just want to address the fact that these candidates self-selected this time slot, and there was no influence by the Cambridge Day or CCTV to organize the candidates in any way. With that said, I'm Nico Imac, longtime journalist and educator alongside Senior Editor Mark Levy.
Hello.
And we welcome you to the second cohort of our conversation. Today, we'll be trying to do our best to steer away from policy and look specifically at temperament and values to understand the candidates as people and leaders. We welcome all of you here today, and to begin, about 30 seconds or less, we'd like to ask the question, who are you and what do you do? Is there someone like to start?
Start with our challenger, John Hanready, and we can come around this way.
All right, sure. Well, I'm John Hanready, and what do I do? Well, I'm retired. I retired from the, from starting technology companies, and I started a number of them, and then I have retired, been retired for about six years, and in that meantime, I've been, become very community active. So I've started the Cambridge Streets For All, as well as the Neighborhood Nine Coalition, basically to give the neighborhood a voice, as well as to inform them of things that is important to them.
And I'm Robert Winters, and I've been living here since the blizzard of 1978, same place on Broadway, and bought my house in 1985, and got myself involved in civic activities soon thereafter. Of course, my real gig is that I teach mathematics currently, just at the Harvard Extension School, where I now have about 250 students, including probably the majority of them who are actually high school age students taking multi-variable calculus now. But I've basically been involved in just getting people involved in civic things and reporting on things. I started something called the Cambridge Civic Journal, and I also maintain the Cambridge Candidate Pages for, so people can find out who all the candidates are.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Ayesha Wilson. I am a city councillor, running for reelection, and I'm a mom. I'm a social worker. I grew up in Cambridge. I'm excited to be doing this work. I'm also a nonprofit leader. I'm the Executive Director of Emerge Massachusetts, and I don't know, I'm really excited to be, you know, doing this work, to be reelected, to continue to serve in the city that raised me, so.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for having us. My name is Mark McGovern. I'm currently serving my sixth term on the council, and I served four terms on the school committee prior to that. I am also a social worker with 30 years of experience working with children and families. I've been the mayor once, vice mayor twice, also born and raised in Cambridge. I should, I have a lot of similarities, and, you know, really tried to work to, on the council, to try to make Cambridge a place that is socially and economically just for everybody. Cambridge is an interesting city with a lot of people doing really well and a lot of people struggling, and how do we bring that together to make sure that, that we work, we work for everybody? So I'm looking forward to this conversation and hopefully being reelected.
I am Kathy Zoucy. I'm running for reelection to the Cambridge City Council. I have lived in Cambridgeport for 30 years. I've lived, I've been a civic activist for 25 years. I led the revitalization of Magazine Beach Park, our second largest park, the restoration of St. Augustine's African Orthodox Church. I started If This House Could Talk, where we turned the community into an exhibit. I initiated an open space campaign for the city, which resulted in the city updating its open space plan, and I think most of you know, I stepped in to serve on city council last September, so just a year ago, when very sadly councillor Joan Pickett, who was doing a great job, died. So I've been serving in her stead since then, and it's been, it's a, it's an honor to serve and endlessly fascinating and endlessly endless job. Thank you.
So Nico and I are in an interesting position of repeating questions. We're doing this for the second time today, but the first place, the first, where we're starting is going to hit a lot differently because we have so many incumbents and so many people who've been in civic life for so long here. The question had to do with folks who come along and their first effort, their first step into public life is running for public office, which is often, you know, eyebrow-raising. And so I wanted to get a take on the people here, some of whom have been around and working for a very long time for the community, about how this strikes them. Is this a, do they feel like this is a valid way to go? Is it, did some of them enter civic life by running for office first, rather than chairing a commission, or leading a civic group, or even like doing a bunch of public comment, or, you know, writing essays for the paper or something? Who would like to start? Is there anyone who wants to engage on this?
I'll do it. Unless John wants to do it.
I mean, in an ideal world, it would be much better if, if people were to be involved in a range of things prior to seeking public office. But I don't, I wouldn't shoot down anybody for just doing it, because what the heck? It's 50 signatures, it's what it takes, and if you're there and you've got a point you want to make, you know, you should absolutely go for it. But I will say one thing, that when, there was always discussion about the city charter over the last few years, one of the things that I promoted in there, even though it was, it was something, what we, I wasn't in favor of having something like a, you know, a separate district councillors or whatever, but I actually thought it would be a good idea to recreate something akin to the ward committees, so that people from all around the city in their respective neighborhoods could actually dive right in, get involved in things, and basically create sort of like a farm system. And so that then they could sort of get their feet wet, and then at some point they'd say, you know, maybe I could do the citywide, and it would be, I just think we'd be a healthier city if we had that. Not, I'm not suggesting there should be a voting body or something like that, but just as a good idea generator, a way of getting people involved, or whatever. And that's one of my regrets with what came out of the whole charter process, is that we don't want to have anything like that, but I, I think it would have been a really good addition.
Yeah, I would say, you know, I think maybe, maybe sometimes the neighborhood committees and stuff kind of serve a little bit of that role, maybe. You know, and I agree with Robert to the extent that I won't begrudge anybody who wants to run. It's not an easy decision, it's not an easy thing to do if you're willing to put your hat out there and hat in the ring and, you know, take the, you know, the feedback that isn't always, you know, easy. All power to you. I mean, I do think on some level, though, that, I, when I meet someone who's running, who wants to run for council and they're new to the city, I always say to them, can you name the elementary schools? Right? And now, schools may be not city council, but most of the time, they say no.
Right.
And the reason I ask that question is because schools are such a central part of community, they're such, it's, this is local office, right? So if you're running because you want to get into politics, and that's the career you want to get, great. But at the end of the day, you're going to be making decisions that are going to impact everyday people, everyday life, and you should probably know something about the community in which you're serving. And so, now, if you had asked me this question 10 years ago, I would have been like, you have to have three generations, and you have to, you know, I've evolved, you know? But I do think it's helpful, right? There's, it helps the conversation. There's a lot of times that people who are newer will say, oh, we should, we should be doing this, or we should be doing that, when we actually either already are doing those things, or we already went down that road five years ago, and it didn't work, or whatever. So I think, you know, again, I don't begrudge anybody for running, but it is, I, I do think you need to know a little bit more about the city than just, I want to run.
Sure.
I was just going to say, I, I'm really grateful for my 25 years of community service because with that, I met people from all over the community, and I also was working with city staff. So I have long relationships with city staff and with MIT, one of the first funders at Magazine Beach Park. I also feel like I learned, I've, you know, been attending I-90 meetings for like seven years, so I've met Mass DOT, I've met people in Alston that are part of that big project. You know, at Magazine Beach, I've been working with DCR, which owns a lot of the park space in the city. I mean, I think everything actually happens through partnership and regional collaboration, and I am really grateful for the relationships that I forged from, not only my understanding of the city was informed by that work, but also I developed relationships of trust and respect that I feel make me stronger and more effective to serve. So I, I was, I think being engaged civically before you run is a great idea. I think it's a really great idea.
Yeah, I agree. I think my, my civic duty when I, when I was engaging with not only the neighborhood and other neighborhoods, but also the council, just seeing how that works and the process that you go, you go through. And so it was, it was invaluable to be able to go through the process and see what it is, and I think even more so, running for office is another, is another step up, because you're now engaging with voters and, and different neighborhoods and finding out their points of view, and, and there is a very diverse community out there. The different neighborhoods are very different in, in feel, in, in the way they look at things, and being able to go out and touch them and, and get to know people is extremely valuable. So running, even if you don't win, you learn a lot about what's going on, so.
And if I can just jump in, as the last person to say.
I won't begrudge you.
No. I learned, I never thought politics was for me, right? And I mean that in a way of like, I always appreciated the city that, that I was raised in, I always gave back in terms of youth service and did a lot with our young people, but didn't really understand the decisions that got made, say at city hall or at the school committee office, that impacted, say, our young people, most importantly, but then thinking about my work on the youth centers, where that came from, right? Decisions that got made. And I was helping a candidate run for office in 2017, and I remember on election day, the former and late mayor and state rep Alice Wolf told me about the Emerge program, and told me that I should learn how to run for office through Emerge, and I did. I took the classes and the training, a six-month training in 2019, with a bunch of, I had 27 women in our cohort, from Julia Mahia in Boston, to Samantha Perlman in Marlboro, to so many other women across the state, and from there, really got excited about what can be and what can happen if my voice was to be elevated in these spaces. And because I was at the high school working for the workforce program, I was seeing a lot of injustices firsthand, and that made me really think about how I can use my voice for good, to help and support the young people that I was working with and their peers, right? And I was really grateful when I ran for school committee and won, because it gave me a lot of, just a sense of hope around like how to make change and what that looks like, but also being representation of the young people who really saw me as a, see me as a mentor. And then when I took the time to run for council, it was because there was a, you know, three candidates weren't running for reelection, and it was kind of like this, this moment of, if not now, then when? And if not me, then who? And I just took that chance, and, and it was a chance on everything, because I also had a small child, and it was just a lot that was going on. And so I'm really grateful, again, to be serving, but now to be as the Executive Director of Emerge and graduated my first class, so women who are out there, so Emerge Massachusetts, we train women on how to run for office, democratic women, and graduated my first cohort, 23 women across the state, who are like, I want to use my voice for good in my communities, from Agawam to Boston and Newton, Somerville, in Cambridge, right? There was a few women from Cambridge. And so it's a beautiful thing to be in that space when people are like, I want to do better, I want to see my community be better, and I think I have the voice to create that change. So I, I definitely congratulate anyone that wants to do it, and I think for Cambridge, because we are the people's republic, it's really that sense of how much do you know about the city, and not just the one issue that you want to run on and change, but just what more, because there's so much more to the work. Again, when I went from school committee to council, it was like, oh my God, like, you know, from the parks and the potholes, you know, versus just focusing on education, academic excellence, et cetera. So it was really a place of like, you have to know more about our city in order to really jump in. And I say have to with a sense of like, it can't just be the one thing that you're jumping into, you need to have a wealth and depth of some things. Like, I know I'm all about affordable housing, I may not be able to quote everything around zoning for you, right? But I know that I'm going to fight for these issues and make sure that when we're channeling affordable housing, that we're channeling in a way that supports the community as a whole.
I think sometimes we forget, when you're in the political bubble, when you're thinking about politics and you're thinking about running, is that the vast majority of people in Cambridge are not that, right? They're living their life, they're going to Little League games, they're going to soccer, you know, they, they're just surviving and, and, you know, they're following things. And I think, sort of to your point, a couple of years ago, I was meeting with someone who was newer to the city, who was running, was, just had graduated from the Kennedy School, and I won't say he or she, because I don't want to give any of it away, but they handed me a probably 50-page document of their political positions on all these sort of national and international things. And I said, okay, this is great, have you been to a Little League game? Like, have you talked to the mom who, you know, has to get her kid out to school and this, right? You know, so I think when you're, when you're following politics, like, you're, you're thinking of, you think everybody's following politics, but I think most of the people in the, and that's why door knocking is so important, right? Because you get, you meet people that, they're like, oh, I didn't even know we were doing that, or I didn't even know that was, you know? And, and so it's, there's a lot of people in the city who, you know, you should get to know, right? And, and because you're representing them, and that, that takes civic engagement, it takes time.
Yeah, I'm just going to quick jump in and say here, you know, I always make a distinction between advocacy and representation, right? They're, they're both important, right? But the thing is, is that, you know, having watched things transpire at the city council over the last three or four decades, representativeness is really the main game. I mean, if you look at 90% of what people vote on, whatever, most people are in agreement about, you know? And, and your principal job is not just to sort of pick your one issue, as you sort of say, and say, I'm here because I've got to deliver the goods on that one issue, that's my reason for being here. No, 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 no. 90% of your job is just to be, you can't put 120,000 people into the Sullivan Chamber, you can only put nine in there, and so your job is to be a representative. That's the principal thing.
Yeah, I, I feel like our job is to like channel the needs and desires of the city, and one of the, I feel honored to attend all these events all over the city, you know, I think we've all been to about three or four events already today.
Today.
But they are an incredible opportunity to see different aspects of the city, and you, you catch an earful of concerns about a myriad of issues, so it's really important to have that exposure, and even, even the events that are extraordinary, like the groundbreaking of the Biogen building this week, that was amazing because you're getting to hear from the president of MIT, you're getting to hear from the president of Biogen, you're getting to hear from our governor about our role as a life science center in the United States of America, the, the critical importance of our role in that place. So, yeah, so, so anyway, it's, it's, it's great for curious, engaged people, ideally with some leadership experience, and who are open and curious to be running for office.
And it just, I know we're sort of segueing off a little bit, but, you know, it's, it's, to, you know, to Robert's point about activism, you know, but once you get elected, right, your role changes, you know, and the job changes. And I know that there's, you know, there's a lot of talk and a lot of divisiveness in the council. I mean, Robert, you remember what the council used to be like?
Well, actually, I remember one city councillor chasing another city councillor down the staircase.
My, my, my favorite story of the school committee was, used to be able to smoke, right? I mean, before my time, so, and Glenn Kuchar, who was a little bit more conservative about things, was sitting next to Sarah May Berman, who was more on the progressive side of things.
She was a runner.
And they didn't mind.
And so, the story goes that Glenn was smoking and would always blow smoke in her direction, and then one day she whipped out one of those little fans and like blew it out. There were those moments, right? And, and you don't see that stuff on the council anymore, so we may, there may be issues, and sort of to your point of, and Robert's point of, you know, you have 120,000 people in the city, you know, there are going to be, there are going to be times when you're not going to get full of agreement on things, and difficult decisions have to be made, because these are difficult problems, right? And people have their points of view, and you also have to be a little egotistical to run for office, because like, why should anyone be, why should people put their trust in me? Like, what the hell do I know, right? So there's a little bit of, you've got nine people who are all kind of opinionated, who all think that, yes, I have the idea, it will work, we all have our constituencies, we all want to get reelected, and for the most part, we do a pretty good job of managing those disagreements and working together, and certainly compared to some history in this city. So, you know, I think it's, you know, it doesn't mean that it's always perfect, and it doesn't mean that there aren't going to be tense moments, of course, you've got nine people in a room who are all struggling with trying to figure out how to do what they think is best. But having that temperament question of being able to, even in disagreement, find some ways to at least come together a little bit, and maybe you don't come together the whole way, but, so that's, I mean, those are important things, and it's way off from the original question of whether you should.
Well, so my follow-up, just a little bit based on something you said, and it's not something we were able to ask the earlier cohort, because there was just more discussion and less time, but before handing it off to Nico, I just wanted to ask, what about when, and I just want to stress, this is a question in the abstract, I don't know, I'm not talking about anyone specific, what about a voting record? What about when you encounter someone who hasn't voted? And I'm going to draw a distinction between not voting nationally and not voting in a municipal election, where you can't really use the argument, all the parties are alike. What happens when you encounter a candidate who has no voting record, or has voted spottily?
In municipal?
In municipal.
And they're running for municipal?
Yes.
They're usually...
I mean, it's for the people. It's for the people to vote, and for the people to decide. I mean, I don't really know, I feel like maybe a couple of terms ago, there was some spotlights on the candidates and kind of what, what their voting records were. I don't know if that'll pop up again this year, but that, again, needs to be for the people to decide, because I'll tell you who has my number one vote, it's me, right? So, wait a minute. Mark, I'm sorry. I never promised.
But you promised me.
I was so close.
Shocking exclusive here.
So, I mean, so I think in terms of what that looks like for every individual, it's about who, who else is going to vote for you out there, and it's important for the people across the city to know, but I don't know if many people across the city actually care, right? And, and I think depending on who you're, who you're talking to, there's going to be many people in our city who really care about your voting record, and there's going to be quite a few people who also are just like, I don't even know how to look that up, I wouldn't even know where to go, right? So I think there's just that, and it's about who do you relate to, who really sees, you know, not only just what's on your palm, you know, your lip, but who actually is making that connection with you, especially when you're on the doors and in the community.
So if someone hasn't vote, isn't voting, it usually takes something to activate them, right? They have to have a...
One issue.
They have to have an issue, and usually that gets them off the couch, because in a lot of cases, they couldn't, most people couldn't name three city councillors, right? And, and that's just the truth of it, because they have their lives, they have their careers, they have their children, and it takes, it takes one issue that really gets them off the couch, whether it's a big building on their block that they don't like, or it's, or it's traffic jams, or whatever it might be, but that, it takes something to get them off the couch and, and make that happen. There's a lot of mundane things, you know, when I, I was at the door one time, and I, I said, well, your, your neighbors, here's, he said, what's, what's hot? And he says, well, here's what your neighbors are worried about. And he goes, well, I agree with all those, but what about rats? And so, you know, at the end of the day, the, the city is really about safety, it's about, you know, traffic, it's about, it's about the things that have touched people's lives, and it should, and luckily here, it's somewhat mundane, must, much of it works, there are exceptions, but it takes, but in order to get people moving, and, and they're pretty comfortable right now, because it is safe, you know, the, the trash gets picked up and those types of things, but something has to get somewhat off the couch, and they have to be passionate about it.
Actually, I just wanted to jump in and say, just got to toot my own horn here, since I do keep a track of all the voting histories or whatever, and I put up information about voting histories, which is probably how most people find out about the voting histories, there are about 70 people who haven't missed an election since 1997, and I call them the super voters, and I'd like to say to everybody, I am the super voter. I've never missed, you know? And I, the funny thing about it is, when you actually look at the list of them all, I go, I know this person, this person, you know, but that's how it is, you know? But, but I'll say, when I put up on my website information about all the voter histories, I just do it because I know people might be curious, it's not, it's not meant as any sort of judgment, whatever, but I do get email messages from people, sometimes which are really mean-spirited. People are sort of trying to grab whatever they can to disparage somebody, and then I have to sort of say, give me a break, right? You know, so the thing is, is it's, if you're a voter, there's lots of criteria out there. If you want to use voting history as one thing, that's up to you, you know, if you want to use your position on this issue or that issue, that's up to you. You know, a lot of people would vote just based on how long has this, was this person born and raised here? I was not, I am an adopted Canterburyan, thank you very much, but, you know, if they want to base their, you know, it's up to the voter, you know, they can use whatever criteria they wish.
And I just wanted to say, and thank you, Robert Winters, for keeping your Cambridge Civic Journal going, which has not only tracked who's been voting, but also receipts, who's, who's raising money, and what sort of money they're raising, and where it's coming from. So I think outside of Cambridge Day, I feel like the Cambridge Civic Journal has been the best source of news, and now the Harvard Crimson is also adding to the pool of information, but I feel like those have been the three central sources for local news, so I, we're, we're all grateful to you, and again, we're grateful to Mark for getting Cambridge Day going since 2009, a service to the community.
It's been a nice hobby. Just want to point out, it's not my job, it's just a hobby.
I would say, first of all, you also have to, it's very easy, very easy to look at a chart and try to sum up somebody's, who they are and what they stand for. There's always a, a story behind something, right? So I'd like to know, why didn't somebody vote, right? I mean, maybe they moved out of state, you know, maybe they were in college, maybe, you know, maybe if you go back far enough before early voting and mail-in voting, maybe they were in the hospital that day. I mean, there's all kinds of things, right? So you, you got to be careful about, I think sometimes people think, they look at one or two things, and they think they, they know the person, or they think they know, we're all more complicated than that, right? And so I wouldn't judge somebody based on, you know, just that voting record. I would also say in municipal elections, is, you know, so when rent control sort of went away, and that was sort of the big divisive, you know, issue, right? And then when that was gone in, in 94, there was sort of this, I mean, I'm interested in what you think, Robert, there was sort of this lull of divisive issues, right? And then, you know, now, you know, development and bike lanes are, are, are sort of leading, you know, leading that conversation, which are drawing people out because they feel strongly one way or the other. But for the most part, you know, the, most of the people running for local office in Cambridge are not, we're all kind of in the same ballpark, right? You don't have super right-wing Trump agenda-type people running, right? We're all kind of, you know, you read our palm cards, it sounds like we all agree on everything, right? And there's sort of the devils in the details a little bit, but it's a well-run city, we have a strong city manager, we're all kind of in the same ballpark on some things, nobody's running saying we should be arresting unhoused people, right? We might have different feelings about how to, you know, help people and deal with it, but, so, I think a lot of people are like, yeah, I mean, it's, what does it matter, right? And so I think that keeps some people home, but again, I think, you know, when you have a strong issue that you feel strongly about, then that does drive people, and I think that's probably what we're seeing a little bit, I bet numbers start to climb a little bit as some of these, you know, there's two or three issues that people feel strongly about one way or the other that drives people out. But if that's not there, I think most people are pretty satisfied with the city, and they kind of, maybe they don't feel the need to vote locally.
Yeah, since you, I mean, I'll give you my impression of it, it's true, but once upon a time, we had, you know, the principal camps, and Mark knows as well as anyone else, it was the Cambridge Civic Association, which was largely aligned with the rent control issue, or not originally, by the way, but it became known to be that, and then the others, which are the independents, right? And yeah, after all of that kind of disintegrated after question nine, we did go through a period where we sort of, every man, every woman for himself, it was the, and wasn't issue-driven or, but it was in very small ways. Maybe it was about 10 years ago, I'd say, that, that organizations started coming into existence. But maybe it was about ten years ago, I'd say that, that organizations started coming into existence. And, and I don't, and, and that's great because I think it does help in terms of the electability of certain people. You have candidates, it's helpful, I think. And also voters need information and it may be imperfect information, but they, they appreciate getting some advice and sometimes you just don't have that advice. But that said, the, the single issue aspect of the organizations, to me, has become really problematic, you know? And I think it's unfair to candidates, potential candidates too, that they set to say, well, I may not agree with you one hundred percent on this here, but you gotta sign the pledge or you gotta be part of this, you're not gonna get support unless you agree with us one hundred percent. I just think most of us are different than that. We don't fit so easily into these little boxes. And I, I just kinda wish that these various endorsing organizations and all these things would sort of open up a little bit. You know, or else come up with some new ones that are, that are just a little bit more broad in scope and, and not so narrowly focused and saying, you know, my way or the highway. You know, I think we'd all be better for that.
I agree.
We'll agree, uh, to come back to the organizational issue and Nico? Sure, and I think this next question actually builds on the existing conversations. So you're welcome to continue, uh, in this line of thought. But my question is regarding kind of qualifications, um, and experience. I think a lot of people have an idea of what someone running for office should look like and what background they should have. I think, just again, talking generally, there's some who think or would argue that you need an Ivy League degree to run for office. I think some would argue that you need working class experience. Um, some would argue that you need to be a homeowner, some would argue that you need to be a renter. Um, I personally believe that there's a million entry points into politics and civic life, but I'm curious to hear from your personal perspective, uh, why is your experience needed on the council? And more generally, what experience is missing from the council currently?
I can chime in. So I think leadership experience is really, really important. I was the head of the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association for almost four years. I think that was really helpful and a lot of city staff and, um, community organizations presented to, to us during those years. So I feel like that was part of my education. Um, I, I think it's, um, so I think, I think proven leadership and proven ability to get things done is, is very, very helpful. I wish there were more people on the council with, so my training was as a museum curator, um, but I really am an experienced project director. But I did study art history and architectural history and, um, in design. And I, I wish more of my colleagues on the council had that training or urban planning training because I think it would inform the decisions that they're making about upzoning. So I, I think it's been interesting because we have our social workers. We have Paul as a lawyer. You know, we, we have sort of, uh, representatives of different, uh, sort of experience, uh, professional experiences that informed their outlook on the council. But I feel like it's, it would be helpful, you know, it's, it would be helpful to have a businessman. It would be helpful to have someone so deeply knowledgeable about civic affairs on the council. I, I think it's good to have, uh, representatives from abroad, coming from a variety of perspectives. So they're not doing group think, so they're actually challenging one another and thinking creatively to come up with solutions for the city. Um, so I don't think there's one, one way to train to be on the council, but I just feel like being open-minded, creative, curious, being willing to do the homework, having a proven track record of having done that homework. And I guess for me, I, I did that, um, again, leading the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association. But I also was a co-chair of the Conservation Committee of the Local Garden Club, which is a really great group. And I, I've organized just a million lectures over the course of time. I feel like all of that has been useful, those project management skills, those organizational skills to being on the council.
Yeah, so I think, um, yeah, I think a broad base and the council is important. I think what I bring is a businessman's point of view of starting companies and bringing them to market. And there's a lot of things that we do in the city that is bringing things to market. It's, it's going out and talking to the stakeholders, figuring out what the benefits you wanna get, figuring out how to measure those benefits and then measuring the results to get the benefits. And so that's what I, I can bring to the, to that is, is the experience with, you know, dissecting something, you know, in a, in a business startup business, you spend two years and six million dollars coming up with the answer. Uh, you're gonna deliver something, you talk to customers, experts and everything else. And then you launch it and the first, you give it to the first customer and they say, that sucks. It does, it doesn't do it. And then you go, you take their, their criticism and you go back and you whittle it and you, it still sucks, but not as bad. But eventually you get to something that really works and it's successful. And I think, you know, from, from a government standpoint, we, we should be able to measure, that's decide on the benefits that we're trying to get, measure against those and then try to incrementally improve them because we, nobody can ever get it right first. And so that's what I'm, that's what I, I can bring. But I think you need a broad base and I think people also vote on how they relate to the person, right? Are they responsive, are they enthusiastic? Are they, uh, you know, do they understand what they're doing, do, do they represent me? And so I think there's, you know, you have your expertise in, in schooling or in jobs and other things. But, uh, you also have that element of personal skills and, and enthusiasm that you can push through, so.
Well, just dive in here, you know, I mean, we use proportional representation in our elections. And I think, and to your point, uh, you know, I, I mean, I think that, that in an ideal world, we should have the, the elected body of, uh, whether it's six members on the school committee or nine persons on the, um, city council should be reasonably representative of the whole city. There are a lot of people with advanced degrees in the city, so maybe you should have some people with that. There are a lot of people who involve the human services throughout the city. A lot of people involve the education sector. Uh, you, you know, it's, it's, it would be ideal to do that, but, um, but I also think that it's, you know, it's almost like sometimes in competition because we'd also like to have representation based along, uh, personal identities or on what neighborhoods you're from. And we don't always succeed in that. So I, I've often raised this question over the last year or so. I always say, we, you know, everybody says, we love our proportional representation election system. I say, proportional to what? You know, it's, it's a simple question, but proportional to what? And I don't know how it is, but through some sort of weird alchemy, somehow we managed to get it somewhat representative, but it's often imperfect. I think when Joan Pickett passed away, unfortunately, um, she was very, very hot on the trail of a lot of financial type of stuff, municipal finances. And I thought it was a tremendous loss to lose, uh, that expertise. And I sort of hope that we can recover more and more of that. You know, but again, it's, it's sort of like, I just raised that question, proportional to what, really, so.
I'm gonna say that I'm a professional advocate. And so I think my whole life and training has been around advocacy and making sure that especially our most vulnerable youth and families are, uh, being served and serviced in a way that they also feel like they belong in our communities. And so I think having that skillset and that background, I mean, having the degree of social work kinda came much later, after, uh, already being an advocate and doing youth work. So, you know, I think just having that ability to see an issue, see a need within pockets of our community and say, how can we actually do better within our community to meet those needs? Um, that ability to advocate, to know, uh, and to know that if we are meeting our supporting and reaching our most vulnerable, then everybody's gonna be successful and succeed. So as we look at homelessness there, our unhoused community, as we look at people who are dealing with, um, mental health issues and, and concerns there, those who are living in poverty in our city that's so wealthy, it's like, how, right? And so when you think about, you know, even just cash assistance to families, like that being kind of like the low-hanging fruit of what maybe things that we could be doing to support individuals, recognizing, you know, the, the cost to that. But we have individuals in our family, in our cities that, in our city that can't put food on the table, right? Who are really struggling to make small ends meet that other families are able to do without blinking an eye. Um, and, and that's heartbreaking because that's also my life story, right? And so I think a little bit of my own identity in that work also pushes the drive of like, I get it and I know that. Um, I also sit here as the third black woman and fourth woman of color to serve in the history of the city council, which I think is not progressive at all and really quite sad. And so when we talk about even that level of representation and, you know, in leadership and what I hold in my identities, just across kind of who I am, it's, you know, as a black woman, as a young, as a mom, a mom to a toddler, um, there's a lot of things, a social worker, you know, a youth worker, all those things really just hits different buckets that I think people align with and see as valuable on the council. So yes, I may not have a planning degree or a planner's degree, but I have advocacy skills and I have basically a PhD in advocacy. And I think I get things done in that respect. Or I open people's minds and eyes up to, oh wow, I didn't think about it from that perspective. Oh wow, you're bringing something else here to the table that I wasn't mindful of. And, and let's think about things a little differently, which I kinda appreciate being that added voice to the council this term.
Yeah, I think, um, you know, nobody's gonna be an expert in everything, right? And, and especially if you run, and, and I think, um, Aisha, you had mentioned this earlier, you know, cause we both served on the school committee, you know, you're dealing, you know, I worked in schools, I was working special ed, I knew a lot about schools, I, you know, I'm a parent of kids in the schools. Um, so I felt pretty like, that was the one thing they were dealing with. And I was like, okay, I'm pretty mu- I got this, right? City council, you're dealing with a million different things. And so no one's gonna be an expert on, on all of it. And that's why it's important, you bring different things to the table, right? And people bring different skills to the table or different education, knowledge, work experience. But I think, you know, some things to, to, some of the characteristics that to, I think makes it, to make you more successful and in turn, more successful for the community is, and something I think, you know, I, I bring to the table is being able to, first of all, not hold grudges against colleagues, right, and other people and being willing to work with anybody where you can find common ground. And so, you know, we may, we don't, we don't battle a lot too much, we're on the same page on most of the things. But, you know, Aisha and I might vote differently on a particular issue and might, you know, you know, go back and forth a little bit on a particular issue, but then the very next thing on the agenda, we're holding hands on it, right? Or, you know, Kathy and I disagree on something, but we still find areas where we can work together.
We all, we all work to bring attention to the CSO outflows at Elway, right? We did that together.
So, so, you know, it's, you know, being, having that sort of temperament, right? And how do you, um, I remember a school committee meeting where it was a retreat and Fred Fantini and I almost went over the tables at each other about standardized testing, right? And we were going at it. And when the, when the retreat was over, he was like, oh, I'm gonna get a drink. And I was like, absolutely. And, you know, and, and so, you know, you have to have a temperament to be able to work with people, you know? And I think, you know, I'm always proud of the fact that, yeah, look, I certainly have my issues and I have my moments, we all do. But I'm always proud of the fact that I have worked on significant pieces of legislation with all my other colleagues, whether some that are not, are, are here anymore, some that are, are here. You know, always able to say, okay, look, maybe we're not on the same page on our housing policy or on our bike lane policy, but we are on the same page on this other issue. How do we move this forward, how do we work together? And that is almost more important, I think, to having a functional body, which in, is going to then do better work for the community as a whole than whether I went to Harvard or UMass Boston, where, where I graduated from. So, um, to me, that's what's, you know, that those are key. And I think that some of what I think is something that I, that I bring to the table, and I think a lot of us bring it, not just me, but I think, I think, you know, being able to work with, with others and, and figuring out how to navigate, you know, difficult conversations, right? I mean, I don't know, we're not gonna get too into policy, but if you, if you take the multifamily housing policy, right? That looked, really, what came out looked really different than where we were originally. And there could have been five votes to just kind of ram that through and, and pass it. But what came out was, was through negotiation and through conversation and, you know, it managed to make people angry on both sides of the issue, which isn't necessarily great. Um, but there was compromise there, right? People were willing to say, you know, okay, let me, I wanna hear what your point of view is and I'm willing to, you know, not get everything that I want, but get a lot of what I want. And I, and I think those, that's more often where we land on, on things. I mean, most of the votes on the council are eight to one, nine, nothing, seven to two. There are some five fours. There are some five fours, and there's always gonna be five fours, there's always been five fours. It doesn't matter what nine people are in that room, there's always gonna be an issue where you just can't land in a place where most, the majority of the people agree, or I guess five four is a majority, but the vast majority. Um, but I think for the most part, you know, having people that are willing to work with each other and talk to each other and kind of let things go when they do have those more intense moments, that's what makes a functional committee. And I, I think for the most part, we all do that.
Yeah.
One, one follow-up question before I hand it back to Mark. Um, in our first cohort, um, you know, very diverse, but it definitely skewed younger and it skewed to first-time candidates or newer candidates, I should say. Uh, all of you have decades of experience in civic life. Um, and so I am curious to know, um, from your perspective, you know, a lot of people would argue they need fresh blood or fresh perspectives, um, but you guys have been at it for a long time and maybe that experience is valuable too. And so I'd like to give you an opportunity to not necessarily defend your record on policy, but to defend your experience in civic life.
Well, I, I was knocking on her door the other day and, um, a couple answers to this. So I knocked on, on this person's door the other day and she, um, knew who I was and didn't hold back from telling me that this entire city council are buffoons and people working for the city don't know what they're doing and, um, and I said, well, is there anything you like about the city? Just what's, what's good about the city? And she said, I love our environmental policy, I love that we invest in our schools, I love that we invest in public safety. And she listed like all these things. And I said, well, you think that happens by accident, right? It happens because we have good people working for the city. We have a city council that, that promotes the values that people bring forward to the city. It's not all gonna be perfect, never gonna be perfect. But, you know, this idea that somehow, you know, people, I think Cambridge is a great place to live. That's sort of provocative to say in an election because the easiest thing to do is to criticize everything. Um, I think Cambridge is a great place to live. Are we perfect? Not perfect. And housing is still too expensive, we still have a two-tiered education system, lots of things we can point to that we have to get better at. Um, but it is a great city and that doesn't happen because you have a whole bunch of buffoons working for the city or representing the city. So I think experience matters. Um, pop, being a, a good elected official, it's, it's a skillset. Like, I mean, you wouldn't say, oh, I need, you know, my mouth is hurting, I'm gonna go to the dentist who's never been a dentist before, right? Um, there's a skillset. How do you work with people? How do you build coalitions? How do you compromise? How do you build trust with people? How do you understand all these different complicated issues? Like, it, there is a skillset. I'm not good at a whole lot of things, trust me. But I'm pretty good at this, I think. And some other people, you know, are good at other things and maybe they're not so great at being an elected official. So this idea that like experience, there are a lot of professions where people would say, experience is irrelevant. I think experience matters. Now, that doesn't mean that you don't need fresh voices, cause you need new voices, you need new experience, you need new, you need people to push you to think differently. But there's gotta be a balance, right? Um, you know, nine city councilors who have never served before probably wouldn't be a great city council. Nine city councilors who have been there for forty years probably wouldn't be a great city council. So, you know, so I, I think sometimes it's, people are very, it, it, politics is a profession where people are very easily to say, oh, you know, experience, I mean, God, look at the buffoon in the White House right now, right? You know, that's elect someone who's, you know, never been a politician before cause they're gonna clean it all up, you know, so, um, I, I just, I, I just think there needs to be a balance.
And I think just to add on, what we have right now in, on the council is quite diverse in terms of length of time on the council, right? I'm serving my first term on the council, although I had two terms on the school committee, right? So I'm a very new elected official, if you would, right? But again, that level of advocacy that I've done for over twenty years has kind of prepared me for an opportunity to represent the city at large, right? And be like, I, I can do this in a, in a greater capacity that can at least touch more people and support more people. So, and I think other of my colleagues, you know, whether you look at someone and they did a term and didn't, you know, didn't, you know, and then came back for a second term, we have like the, the ones and twos of terms people, right? In addition to having fresh, you know, older folks in the, in the game who have more experience and folks who I can call on, like, I have this idea or this thought, I don't know Robert's rules all, you know, from front and back, but I'm getting to learn that, and I learn more and more through the meetings that we have, and just by going maybe on Robert's, Winter's page.
I don't think that experience in government is, is what people say are, are talking about when you say, I wanna, I want something fresh. It, it's fresh ideas, it's, it's fresh, somebody that represents my, my experience in life. And it's not, it's not, the freshness isn't necessarily have to do with the, um, the experience you have in government, or with the community, or whatever it might be. That doesn't what, that's not what forms your, your soul and your, your point of views. And I think when people want a fresh point of view from the government, what, are we working on the right things? Do we have the right priorities? Um, you know, is, is this what represents my values? Those are the things they're looking for as, as a French, fresh view. And I don't think that has to do with experience. May, maybe you get into a rut if you have too much experience, but it's not the experience that causes that. It's because you're in a rut and, and you're getting bored with what you're doing, or, or whatever it might be. So I think when people are talking about new, it's, let's, let's change the direction, let's get another point of view, and, uh, let, let's make a change, so.
I'll just dive in a little bit here. I'm reminded of a term Glenn Cucci used to use in describing candidates, is sometimes people will vote for somebody because they are, quote, don't take it literally, the pretty new face. You know, so the person who
Thank you.
I was, of course, thinking of Mark when I, when I said that. Uh, and so there's a tendency, especially when people feel candidates, incumbents are safe, that they wanna vote for the pretty new face. So I'm sure anybody who's incumbent now, like, oh, whoa, 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 watch out, watch out for the Uh, but there's also, I guess, there's another kind of metaphor you could use, which is the shiny new object. So somebody comes in and says, I've got this brilliant idea about housing should be, or I've got this brilliant idea about transportation ought to be, whatever. And they might be right, and they might be wrong, but I think a lot of times, sort of in the spirit of progressivism, people sort of say, we all gotta get on board this. It's the new thing, man, it's the shiny new thing, you know? And I think sometimes the shiny new thing gets, gonna get tarnished pretty quickly, you know? And I'd even throw that in, uh, not just on the elected official, but even within some of the city departments. I think some of the city departments are sort of losing a lot of important institutional memory. And, and there's a lot of tendency toward, uh, toward, you know, making a big splash on something that they can sort of put the big press release out on, whatever, and you know? Sometimes you sort of have to be a little bit more of a transition-oriented from the past to the further present to the future. And I think sometimes when you become so addicted to the pretty new face or the shiny new object, sometimes you lose that.
And I, I just wanted to add, I think it's, it's really, again, important to have a diversity of points of view and thoughtful conversation. Because we're discussing like big ideas, big, I know we're not supposed to be talking about policy, but we're discussing policies that are gonna define the future of the city at the council. So it's really important that there is a high level of discourse at the council meetings. And I, I am hoping that there will be some new energy brought to the council with this election, because I think there's a lot of groupthink on the council. And I think there are a lot of people wed to certain ideologies and not going, not thinking beyond the ideology. So I, I think it's always great to have, I, I don't care if someone disagrees with me as long as they can explain why they, what their point of view is, and why, what the foundation for their understanding of an issue is. Um, because there, there, again, there's too much at stake on the council not to be considering things in really thoughtful ways. Whether it's, yeah, in, in zoning, um, you know, do we wanna follow the recommendations of Envision Cambridge, or do we wanna disregard those recommendations completely? Um, do we wanna consider the city's policy of gentle growth, uh, uh, in gentle densi- density, which it has been following for decades? Or do we wanna allow developers to randomly define the heights and, um, the shape of our city? They're like serious issues that we're discussing, and what I appreciate as a, a former museum curator is just people uh, looking at issues from all the different angles, thinking about the unintended consequences, what the repercussions are gonna be, um, before seizing on an idea and moving it forward.
So now we're gonna get a little spicy. Because I actually think we all do that. And I think for, for you to say that council, that there, there are certain councilors that just get ideologue and they don't think about the whole picture, or they're not thoughtful, that's pretty insulting to your colleagues. I think we all do that. We may land in different places. You know, people think, if you're someone who, let's say, is less supportive of housing development, you think the people who are supportive of, they're just ideologues. They just, you know, da, 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 but you're okay, you're, you're pure in the way you think about it.
Mark, I'm, I'm not less for housing development.
I didn't say that, I would use that as an example, so take something else. You, you believe in dog parks, right? So I don't like dog parks, but because you believe in, you're just an ideologue that wants the animal rights people to vote for you. But I don't believe in it, and I'm sure in my decision, you know, we all have opinions.
We need cat parks, that's what we
So, but, but I, I get it, I mean, I gotta push back on that for, for to, to say that, that, you know, I don't think anybody on our council, whether I agree with their position or not, is not thoughtful about what we're doing. We all take this job incredibly seriously, we all think about these things twenty-four seven. And just because someone may have a different opinion than you, doesn't mean that they're an ideologue and you're not. So I think, I, I just gotta push back on, I think that's really, I, I don't know, I
I, I wanna totally agree on that, and I also just wanna say, you know, the perspectives of nine different people to come into a room, into the chamber, and actually debate and discuss um, issues that are important to everyone across our city in very different ways is, is not the easiest thing to do, right? Um, especially when we're talking about hot ticket conversations, whether it's, and it's been housing and bike lanes. So on those issues where we know that it's already hot, we have to come in doing our homework, making sure that we are in a place of representative, representing, uh, the voice in which we bring to the table, and thinking about those unintended consequences as well. But also making sure that we're making decisions that we know ten, twenty years from now can still improve the lives of so many more across our city. So I think personally, um, again, we're not gonna be perfect in these decisions, all, you know, there's many things that we all, nine of us vote on, right, and it's unanimous, uh, not just resolutions, but policies, um.
Congratulations.
But when we do have those five fours, those are really intense conversations where there's a lot of learning and growing, and sticking kind of to your guns on this level of advocacy, I have to stay consistent right now on this issue, because if I don't, there are people out there that I know this is going to impact in a very different way. Um, and, and so I, I just say that in a way of like, we're all working hard at doing this job. It's, you know, but I think any new person or us sitting, um, incumbents right now, we know that any decision that we wanna put forward, we know that we need to have at least five, we need to have at least five to get us, to get it over the finish line. So new people, bright ideas, all that good stuff, incumbents, bright ideas, all that good stuff. We all just wanna push, we wanna make sure that our city is a great place, that whether you grew up here or you are new here, that you could continue to live here, possibly raise your families here, work, thrive, and enjoy, right? And learn, continue to learn in. We wanna make sure that our schools are safe, we wanna make sure that our communities are safe, that people are learning and growing and being able to do it together. Because that's about diversity, and that's about equity and inclusion. Um, and I think that those, there's a lot of things that we miss, uh, in how we have these conversations, but it doesn't mean that you're right and I'm wrong. It means that we just have some learning and growing to do together. And that's why I love, you know, that's the one thing that I really love about being at this seat, is I get to see kind of who am I totally aligned with? And who am I like, maybe I need to sit down with them some more, so Kathy, let's get coffee.
So if we cut down the middle of ideologues and collegiality and skill set and experience, and uh, we, we find that the city manager is at the heart of things. We have a form of government where the city manager is running a staff, and you guys are setting policies for the city manager to follow. And I'm just curious as to what the sense is about, when it comes to skill sets, is it more important or less important to have the skill sets to match city staff? Or is it okay to be more of an ideologue, more of an ideas person, and give rough ideas and let them go at it? If we didn't have finance experts, if we didn't have lawyers?
On the council.
On the council.
I, I could, I could jump in with something, this is sort of a historical perspective. You know, you might ask a question, when we, when they first proposed the planning charter form of government back in the nineteen thirties, um, why wasn't there proportional representation associated with all these other systems? Or why, I should say better, better, why was it that it was tied to a strong city manager form of government? And I believe, from what I've read historically and, and the way it works around the world, is that, um, proportionality is really good to get a lot of crazy people in the same room together yelling at each other and hacking it out, and maybe disagreeing, and maybe, you know, getting it to fisticuffs or whatever. But if you don't have some sort of strong executive tied to it, right, then it's just, it's just chaos. So in many respects, um, it is important to have a strong city manager if you wanna have this kind of, you know, free-for-all, or potentially free-for-all amongst, uh, elected officials. Um, and I think in some respects, I mean, you could speak to this more so than I could, but, um, you know, they changed under edge reform on the school committee side, so that, uh, once upon a time, the school committee had a lot more say-so, and, and Mark as well, in terms of hiring and firing, whatever, and I don't think that was so great. But the thing is, is that you had this sort of diverse school committee, but then you could still have a stronger form of school superintendent, so that ultimately, you know, their, their job is still depended on you, just like our city managers depending on the city councilors. But the thing is, is that it was very important that the manager have some sort of a strong hand to run the show.
I think that, uh, in, uh, being not, not serving yet, um, my, my impression is that the council's about policy. And you're setting a direction, right? And, and implementation is what the city manager does. He has the teams to do it, he has the expertise, and, you know, it's sort of, uh, you, you, you say, okay, I wanna connect these five spots in, in the city with bike lanes. You step back and you let the experts figure out the best paths, right? And that, that might be, that, that would be the way to do it. But, but it's setting the goals rather than the implementation. And so the manager has the people on his staff that, you know, are legal, they're, uh, just traffic experts, they're whatever, whatever the issue is. And he can call on them to come back to the council. Now, there has to be trust that, that the council's gonna ask for reasonable things, and that the, the answers are gonna come back, are going to be, um, you know, answer those questions and answer those issues in a faithful way. But I think there is, there is a pretty good line there, that policy versus implementation and direction. And I, you know, um, you could tell me if that's how it worked.
You know, and I supported, you know, there was conversation in the, in the charter about moving away from a city manager. Um, I supported the city manager form of government, that doesn't mean I'm always happy with it, right? I mean, it, it doesn't, if we had a strong mayor, we wouldn't always be happy. I, so I understand people's, I understand people who are saying, well, if we didn't like what the mayor was doing, we could vote for somebody else to be mayor. So there is that sort of issue about, it, we're not gonna, it's very hard to fire a, a city manager, it's not something we do terribly often. When was the last time that happened?
Never.
Never. It's not something we do, um.
It happened once.
It happened once, okay?
Thanks for the history, I had to look that one up.
So I get, I get, I get that piece of it, but at the same time, I mean, again, are we perfect? No, but we are a very successful city. We, we're financially stable, we spend a lot of money on our schools, we're one of the safest, you know, I think I saw that for cities over, there's like fourteen or sixteen or something cities over seventy thousand in Massachusetts, and we were ranked behind Newton as the safest city of over seventy or seventy-five thousand. Um, and, you know, Newton's a lot different than Cambridge, right?
Not bad for a very urban setting.
Yeah, right, right, you know, we're, we're a city, so, you know, we can always find things, you know, yeah, I mean, maybe we have differences on, you know, certain issues, and there's certainly a lot we have to do, we can always be better and should be better in a lot of things. But this system has, has pretty much worked, right? And I could pick out, oh, you know, we passed twenty resolutions on municipal broadband, nine to nothing, and it didn't happen. And I could say, there's, someone could point to that and say, well, that's a failure of this whole system. But there's twenty other things that, that, you know, our system has done really, really well. So I think it works, it's frustrating sometimes, but it works. I mean, the results are pretty, pretty clear.
I, I'm, I, and we all voted for the city manager, um, form of government and the new charter, and I think, you know, thank God for it. Because I think it would just be too political if we didn't have a strong city manager. And ultimately, the city manager is responsible for our financial welfare. You know, ultimately, it's up to him, whether our, you know, whether, whether we can balance our books, whether we have the money to fund the programs that the council prioritizes. So I, I feel like it's the city manager that has, in his staff, and he's got an extraordinary staff, I'm just talking about city staff overall as, as extraordinary. Um, they have to make things work. He's evaluated, evaluated in part by whether he and the city respond to see, click, fix, um, complaints, you know? You know, and, and the city does that in a certain number of days, like ninety percent of the complaints. I mean, I, and so I think, um, I think it's really important that ultimately someone is in charge of our budget be, uh, because we've got a one-point-one billion-dollar budget, and, and, you know, I, as you may know, I'm a little worried about that budget, because, you know, vacancies are up, commercial vacancies are up, and our commercial tax levy will be down, so we're gonna have less money going forward. And, uh, but ultimately, it'll be up to the city manager and the staff to really figure out what needs to be whittled down, to evaluate programs, and, um, to, to reconsider what, where we should be spending our money, so that, and, but following council priorities. So I think, I think it's a nice interface. Again, we set priorities and the city staff delivers and make sure that, that we stay solvent.
There is one point I would like to make, though. Uh, and this was related to the charter discussion as well. Uh, under the existing charter, um, Ayesha cannot technically pick up the phone, call up somebody in human services, do this. That's a felony, actually, right? You know, Mark can't call up Public Works and say, I want you to, you know, you better pave my street now, or else, or I'll fire this person, can't do that. And nor should anybody ever want to be doing that. But there are times, I feel, that some of the departments are sort of hiding behind that iron wall, knowing full well that the political people can't really call them in on the carpet so well. And maybe they try and do it a little during the budget hearings, you know? You know, madam, so and so, why aren't we doing this, that, or the other thing? I think it would be a good, um, change if we actually had a regular way in which we could, in a public way, not private phone call badgering somebody, bring some of the departments, you know, on the carpet, and say, look, we, we're not so happy about what's going on here in community development, or in traffic and parking, or, or Public Works, or whatever. Though everybody loves Public Works, so I take that one back, right? You know, and I don't think we have a very good mechanism for doing that. And I think, I mean, I think everybody, anyone who's been through the budget hearings know that it's just a little bit of that, sort of, you know? And then that whoever's chair in the meeting has to, excuse me, is that a financial question? We can only ask, or, you know, we're not supposed to talk about, you know? I do think it would be a good change if we could find some mechanism for doing that, maybe in a roundtable setting, so it's like
Especially the department, you know, CDD's always in front of us, right? Traffic and parking's always in front of us, you can kind of, you get your opportunities to, you know, either
Police is always
You know, to, to call them out on something if you, if you feel you need to. Uh, but there are, I mean, I think, I think you're right, I mean, I think most of the time, for most of the city departments, you know, the only time we really see them you know, the only time we really see them or get to hear from them is during the budget. And then that gets a little clunky and, and so. Yeah, I, I think having some, you know, maybe it is roundtables and, and, you know, and roundtables don't always, you know? One thing I've been sort of saying for years is that when we do roundtables, we always do them in place of a city council meeting. They don't have to be. I mean, you can't, can't really do them on a Tuesday or every other Tuesday because the mayor is at city council. But there are other days of the week, you know, and there are other times that you can do them. And, but, I mean, that's a, you know, that's probably something we should be doing, even just to inform the public. And maybe it's not even, maybe it's all great. Maybe it's not to call them out on the carpet, right? But there are a lot of departments that we don't even necessarily know everything that they're working on and they're doing. Because that all goes to the city manager and doesn't necessarily come to us. So if we're not necessarily informing the public, is, is not. So to give those departments an opportunity to talk about what they're working on, how it's going, we could push back if necessary to the public. You know, maybe not a roundtable because there's no public comment on a roundtable, maybe we'll call it something else. Maybe it's something else.
Special meeting.
You know, you know, but then, yeah, I think.
There needs to be a little bit of public input as well to these things. And not just two minutes. If there's something really substantial that needs to be said, this is sort of a gripe I have generally about our two-minute rule here. Sometimes you do need to say a little bit more. And I don't know that we necessarily get enough chance for the public to really do that.
We'll be there all night.
I know, I know.
But maybe it would be a different format. But I, I do think also the departments need to have some independence. Because ultimately, CDD, planning staff should be using their professional expertise to push back often. Or to, you know, so we, the council may be pushing for something, but their responsibility isn't just to do whatever we recommend. It's to push back and say, well, actually, that doesn't really work. Or actually, you could do this much better by doing this. So we, we want them pushing back. And we want transportation pushing back too. We want to make sure that they're listening and hearing public and council feedback. But we also want them to, you know, they are the experts. They are subject experts in transportation and city planning. And we rely on their professional experience to inform what they're recommending for the city. So there's got to be a little bit of independence.
I, I would love it if people within individual departments would just push back routinely. And not be living in fear that somehow five city councillors are going to be mad at them or whatever. You know, if they have that expertise, they absolutely should fearlessly speak.
It's their job. They're, they're not serving us if they're not pushing back.
And that's why we have the system we have.
That's right.
Because they should be allowed to do that and not worry about whether or not five councillors would disagree with them or something.
But somehow they don't feel like they do. So I think that's something that we do need to dive deeper on and ask the questions of like, why? What is the, you know, is it the creation of the culture within our, you know, from the council or from the city manager? Like, what is it that doesn't make that comfortability, make people feel comfortable enough? Because I mean, if I get a phone call from someone, which I have, they'll say, please, keep that between you and I. You know, and I'm just like, I need you to, like, I want to have your back in, you know, in this. And, you know, it, it could be anything. I know, like, say, for example, we were talking about bike lanes and, um, you know, just public safety. Being able to get up and down the streets and how some folks would say, or maybe whether you're firefighter or a police officer. You might say, it has been challenging to get up and down, say, Cambridge Street, for example. It is challenging. But yet, could we get that on the floor and in public, you know? No, never have we ever. We've asked the question directly and you get, no, we're okay. And it's like, no, you're not. Or, you know, so, I mean, so that's just an example. And, and I think it's just one of those things where people feel like they don't have the, the, the comfortability to be that transparent in terms of how they can be doing their job more efficiently. Based on decisions that do come from the council floor to inform their work.
So much of this, so much of this is how you balance things, right? I don't want to go back to Bob Healy days where, and I never served with Bob as city manager. I was on the school committee at the time. But, you know, councillors weren't even allowed to look at people who work for the city. If you nodded your head, again, I mean, I'm exaggerating. I'm exaggerating. Not, not much. I'm not exaggerating much. It was, I mean, it was Bob's show. And, and there was, you know, and that, I'm not sure is the best thing. But you also can't have nine city councillors calling, you know, people who work for every department and saying, I want you to do this, I want you to do that. I mean, that's not, that's not a good way to run an organization either. So, you know, again, it's sort of, sometimes we do it really well, sometimes maybe we, we stumble. But it's sort of finding that balance where you want to be able to talk to people and ask questions and not always have to go through the city manager to ask a simple question. You know, there, you know, should I, you know, if I'm walking down my, my sidewalk, walking home, and I see a dead rat on the sidewalk, do I need to call the city manager before I call the department of public works and say, I got a dead rat? I mean, that would be kind of, would waste the city manager's time, right? So, you know, there's got to be some balance to it, but it, it's good that there is some open communication.
I think Ayesha actually used exactly the right word though. Because sometimes, you know, certainly, you know, since, by the way, is the charter matter, did they get the final?
Yes, yes, yes.
Just trying to be clear, because I wasn't, I hadn't heard the news about that just yet. But a lot of times people think that, you know, the structure, the charter somehow it answers all the questions. If you use the word culture, you know, the thing is, there is something just as substantial to having a healthy civic political culture. Where in fact, we all know the rules, but, you know, maybe we can sort of have a conversation that maybe, you know, crosses the line a little bit. But it's sort of still part of the culture. And as long as we're all respectful about it. You know, like, I, I wouldn't have any objections, for example, to city councillors striking up a conversation with the department head. But as long as they're not badgering them, whatever. And, and not, and not indirectly saying, well, if you don't do this, you know? But I, I think, sometimes I actually think even the open meeting law is, is destructive. Because it doesn't allow for enough flexibility and freedom for people just to have reasonable conversations. Somebody maybe ought to just ring up the secretary of state's office and say, could you, could you please revise that just a little bit? So that we're not living in fear that we somehow inadvertently talk to five people, you know? A little bit more flexibility would be a good thing.
Just going to jump back in. I think this is an excellent conversation. It's exactly why we have this format. It's so you guys can talk directly to each other. But just for the sake of time, we do have two final questions. Looking at not only the kind of political PACs that we see in Cambridge, but also the kind of increased polarization. So pass it back to my colleague, Mark.
I think that gets to it. I'm sort of struck by the fact that these groups, these organizations over time, as of this year, I feel, have begun to be known as PACs and super PACs. It's language that I hadn't even heard used or, you know, wielded until like very recently. And so there's, whereas the conversation used to be like, you know, do you take developer money? There's still a little bit of that around. I feel like increasingly, people are asking like about endorsements and taking money from the PACs. And I just sort of want to like have some conversation getting at that. Like, are these groups feeling politically useful, politically oppressive? Are they, what, what is the vibe on ABC and CCC and CBS?
All right.
I'm, I'm the newbie. I'm the newbie here. So I'll give you my, you know, so I get questionnaires as a candidate. Extremely detailed. And if you, and you can see their agenda. And you go through it and you go, well, how can I say yes or no to this? It really depends, right? And, and there's a lot of, a lot of that. But there is a huge agenda. And if you're off on any single one of them, you're against whatever. You're against housing. Yeah. And, and so, and that carries through when you go to the door. If you say, how do you stand on bike lanes? Well, like, bike, bike lanes are fine. It's parking. You want to get rid of bike lanes. And it's, it's all of a sudden, it's, it just takes you right to the end where there's no conversation. Yeah, a lot of times, a lot of times, sometimes it's hostile, a lot of times it's very polite. But, but if you're not all the way in, you're not part of that group. And so it is a very polarizing thing, which really stifles a lot of conversation. Because I think people are not, most people are not all the way over here, not all the way over here. They're somewhere in the middle. And they, you know, they, whether it's bike lanes or housing or whatever it might be. And, and that's where they feel they are. And for candidates or councillors to have to stand up and say, I, I'm a CCC or I'm ABC or whatever.
Or both.
Or both.
That's a whole other conversation.
How do you do that?
So are the groups reflecting polarization or are they contributing to polarization?
Well, let me, let me dive in on this one here because I'm just sort of avoiding all of them personally. One of the big criticisms that has often been levied toward neighborhood associations in the past was that they were not representative of the neighborhood. It might actually be, some of them may have started out that way, but then in the end, it's just five people get together or three people get together. In my experience in recent years, these political action committees are often a couple of people, really. And if, even if they formally have more than a small handful of people, it's really just a few people who are calling all the shots. So you're asking voters to sort of look at a slate of candidates and sort of say, oh, this is somehow representative because the Cambridge Civic Association says so. I'm, you know, just take one historical rather than singling out any of the current ones here. Now, if you actually had a belief that that association was a broad-based association with many members and a lot of thoughtfulness and process and give and take and whatever, then you could have a lot of faith in that. But in my experience and my observations today, none, and I'm not just talking about the PACs. I mean, some of these things aren't necessarily called political action committees. They're just a few major ones. But it's three people who get together. And we have decided this is what progressives.
Cool name.
Yeah, we've got a cool name, you know?
A logo.
Right, a logo, exactly like, you know, or somebody who gets up, I'm not going to, not going to name names now. But somebody who gets up every, every, every single council meeting and says, I'm speaking for the blah, 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 blah. I go, no, you're not. You're speaking for, speaking for you and your friend down the street, you know? And, and I think that the voters are getting a little bit cheated in the sense that they're being, there is this strong suggestion that somehow there is this big assembly of people who got together and decided that this is, these are the good guys and these are the bad guys. I just don't think it's that real. I think it's just a handful of people ultimately.
And, and I think there's, you know, there's a distinction between, to, you know, there's the, I mean, there's a legal distinction between the PAC and then the organization, right? So, you know, I may seek endorsements from certain organizations because I agree with their platform. And I may not seek endorsements from other organizations because I don't agree with their platform. And Robert, what you were saying earlier, some of that is helpful, right? It is somewhat helpful to, you have twenty people running all at large. You know, there is some benefit to saying, well, here's our platform and these are the councillors we think will support that. If you don't agree with that platform, then those aren't, maybe you don't vote for those people. The PACs are, you know, that's a different, we don't, there's no coordination between individual to legal, between individual councillors and the political action committee. So they do what they do, right? So if, if CCC or ABC wants to put out their PAC, wants to put out a card that has, you know? I, I mean, I know this because I've been on a few cards that I've been like, Jesus, why are they putting me eighth on this? You know, where clearly I had no influence on what they said because it's like, you know, this isn't even alphabetical, like. So they do what they're going to do, right? Now, if you want to talk about money in politics, I had this conversation with one of these organizations that was concerned about money in politics. But they weren't really concerned about money in politics. They were concerned about money from certain people in politics. And I said, well, if you're really concerned about getting money out of politics, don't endorse anybody who takes more than a fifty dollar contribution or a hundred dollar, whatever your, you know, set your limit where you want. Or spends more than ten thousand dollars on their campaign. But if I, if somebody gets a thousand dollar check from someone who has this profession and a thousand dollar check from someone who has that profession, buys the same number of stamps, right? And so if you're, if you think that money in politics leads to influence and you want to get it out of politics, that's a fair conversation. I mean, I hate raising money. That's a fair conversation. I think we would all love to not have to raise money. Or, you know, I don't, you know, I don't do a lot of fundraisers on Brattle Street. You know, not that I have anything, any problem with Brattle Street, but that's, you know, I, I had someone come to my fundraiser, the last one I did. God bless him. He brought me four coupons from Macy's and said, you need to buy yourself some new shirts. And that was his contribution, right?
And he was right.
I was like, all right, thanks for, thanks for the tip. But, you know, so there, there's, I mean, this is all, again, it goes back to what I was saying before. These things are all very complicated. And I think if you go into it, you know, I have never, I have served with people that maybe I didn't agree with on certain issues. I have served with people that maybe they're not inviting me over for Thanksgiving and maybe I'm not necessarily inviting them over for Thanksgiving. But I have not served with anybody who I felt was corrupt or didn't have what they thought was the best interest of the city in mind. It may be a different view of what I have. So this idea, like this whole thing of like.
Can't take developers.
You know, you know, whatever, like, you know, teachers contribute to my campaign. We vote on the school budget. Should I not be allowed to have a contribution from a teacher? Because ultimately, I vote for the money that's going to pay their salary, right? I mean, there's all of these different layers. And it goes back to this purity test thing. I, I, you know, the people who donate to my money, they're the good people, but you, you know, and it's like.
Well, but you have to wonder if there's a little bit of a conflict of interest to take money from developers.
What, you take money from people who like magazine? So again, it comes down to, this is my, okay.
But they're not contributing to my campaign.
You were the one person, you didn't vote, you were the, it was an eight to one vote on multifamily housing, right? I assume you didn't vote for multifamily housing because you honest to God didn't believe it, right? Not because you were trying to play some political, then you didn't believe it. I give you the benefit of the doubt and the respect.
I didn't think it was the right solution.
Exactly. I give you the, I give you the respect and the benefit to say that your vote against it was a pure vote against it because you didn't think it was the right thing to do. And the people who contribute to your campaign, whoever they are, whatever job they have, I give you the respect to say that you're not doing them favors, you're not being bribed, right? But then you're quick to turn around and say, well, you get, you know, you get money from these people. There must be something sordid about it. No.
That's not fair.
No. Why is your money okay? Those people have influence as well.
And, you know, it's funny because I think I had the same conversation with the same organization, Mark. And, and, you know, how do I, so at the end of the day, there's a lot of these groups that have levels of influence, right? And, and if campaigns didn't need the dollars that they need in order to touch the amount of people that we need to touch, then I think we would be all doing a different level of constituent servicing in terms of knocking doors, fundraising, you know, events, all that kind of stuff. But the reality is that it takes money in order to run campaigns. Now, I don't come from, or.
Or to win campaigns.
But I mean, when you are doing this work, I told, you know, I'm telling people, I don't have even five people that max out on my campaign. I don't even have five people that max out on me, okay? So I'm definitely getting the nickels and dimes and whoever I can get some dollars from in order to actually do the lit. In order to make sure I have solid people on the ground who can work for me. Or the volunteers, I need to give them a slice of pizza or something. I can give them to say thank you for giving your time, right? Palm Pilots and stuff, they do not cost nothing. Palm, Palm Pilots.
Palm Pilots, nineteen ninety-three.
Y'all know what I'm talking about, but the cards, the list.
I got the Beaumont brain here.
But they, they don't cost, they're not free. These things cost a lot of money.
And you also don't have ten thousand dollars to give to you.
And I also can't loan myself ten thousand dollars, okay? So at the end of the day, because specifically we had this conversation in regards to specifically developers. And the, the pushback was that, well, developers are more on profit over people, okay? Versus people over profit. And I don't know if I agree with that one way or the other, right? What I'm saying is that just because someone donates to me doesn't mean that you bought me, right? It means that we are able to have an alignment on some issues. We're able to see the level of support that I need in order to be successful and be a voice on the campaign, on, on the council. And that it takes dollars in order to do that. Now, my other piece to this issue is that these, these groups, these organizational groups, the way they have grown and now they have such an influence and, and tasked on, if you are endorsed by me, you have these rules and restrictions, right? And I think what's heartbreaking too, whether you're endorsed by all or endorsed by some or none or whatever the case is, that's your choosing too. If you choose not to fill out any of those applications, this election year, we have received. This election year, we have received like 15 some odd questionnaires and applications for endorsements.
And a lot of yes to no questions are very complicated.
And I do, and not just the yes to no, right? Oh, no, or maybe they are just yes, no, or they're all open-ended.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? And the reality is, is that one, we don't have the abundance of time to fill out every single one of those applications.
Yeah, I agree.
And the two is that if you really like me for what I'm able to do and deliver on the floors, then let's have that kind of conversation and believe in me in terms of that level of work. I don't need to fill out your 58 question, you know, questionnaire, right?
And I'd be happy with 57 of the answers, but the 58th one.
But that's it, right? So. It does force you to do your homework though. It does force you to, to develop positions and different things. Like I, I just did, you know, the Sierra Club and the Environmental League of Massachusetts, like millions of questions. Like you really had to do a lot of research to be able to answer those questionnaires, but I had a.
I've done those too.
I had a historical question, which is, where you don't have ranked choice voting, do you have as many PACs? Because I, I feel as if the two things are related. Because the advantage of running as a slate of, like if you are endorsed by whatever group, ABC, CCC, Cycle Safety Committee, then, then if, so they don't rank who should get one, two, three, four, five. But you know, if you're, even if you're three or wherever you are, you might get votes from four and five because of ranked choice voting. I mean, ultimately you may be elected by other people on the slate. So I'm wondering what the relationship of PACs and slates is to ranked choice voting.
I don't know if you know that or you know that.
I, I can say that and I can also give you a little historical perspective, which is back in the days when the, the mother of all slate makers was the Cambridge Civic Association. If they endorsed seven, then they printed up seven different styles and they rotated and you're, you were one of the seven. You were, one of, one seventh of those cards was gonna have you at the top. And of course, they gave you a lot of those ones for you to hand out, right? So the thing is, they at least had to maintain the appearance of not being unbiased toward individual candidates. Even if there was, as we used to call it, the whispering campaign, yeah, but you don't really want to vote for this one, right? That happened, right? Because it inevitably happens. But one thing I just wanted to say here though is that the reason why I started doing the, the Cambridge candidate pages, for what it's worth, which was over 20 years ago now, was because it offended me that there were certain campaigns who were extremely wealthy and other campaigns that had nothing. And so I said, I have an idea here. I'm gonna have an identical template. That was important. So that everybody looked exactly the same when they, at least at first blush. They could, candidates could write in whenever they wanted to. I never edited out what they, whatever they put gave me there. But the idea was to level the playing field and at least try to have some mechanism where, where all candidates are put on an exactly level playing field throughout. One of the things I used to do, not on the candidate pages, but on the Civic Journal, was I would keep track of things like real estate stuff. A few years ago I stopped doing that because, I'm sorry, some people may not like I'm saying that, but I don't think that the real estate contributions is relevant anymore. It's a small fraction of things. It's relatively unimportant now. There are, there are other things that I look at and I give it the hairy, I will go, I don't know about that. But it's not so much the developer money so much anymore. There are a lot of other criteria, I think. I'll also say that when putting, and I'm not just here to broadcast about candidate pages, is say that I never put information on there about campaign finance, not on the candidate pages. Because I know that for some people, they're thinking like, oh, wow, that's the criteria that, you know, I said, no, 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 I'm not gonna give you that much. You can go find that out yourself, the Office of Campaign Finance.
So like who has donated? You just show the number of what's in the accounts.
Don't do it, don't do it.
And I think, again, I might be a broken record, but again, I think things are more complicated. You also should look at what people do with that money, right? Now, I, I raise a decent amount of money. Does anybody ever talk about, I spend thousands of dollars on donating to nonprofits in the city through my campaign account. I sponsor little league teams. I sponsor girls softball. I go to the Margaret Fuller Auction. I give them 500 bucks to help fund a kid go to camp. Like a lot of the, I don't just buy, you know, anyone who works for my campaign, they get $20 an hour, right? I haven't, I spend a lot of money on salaries for people because if you're gonna work for me, you know, not the one-off candidacy, but if you're gonna be, you should get paid and I don't care if you're a high school kid or whatever, I'm gonna pay you for your work. People should get paid for their work. So, you know, but people, they look at the number and they say, oh, he's just raised this amount of money. But I, I mean, a good portion of my money goes right back to supporting vulnerable people in the community. So if I can take a thousand dollar donation from somebody, regardless of what their occupation is, and I use that money to get elected so that I can be a voice for Cambridge RISE and for affordable housing and when I was mayor, free lunch for all kids in the Cambridge public schools before the state did it. And I'm using my position as an elected official to help vulnerable people in our community. That's a good use of that money. Now, if I was using that money to just benefit the wealthy people in, in the community, I'm not, and maybe that's a different conversation. But, you know, you've gotta look at what people do with it too. It's not, all these things, you can't just ask the surface question. They're deeper, they're more complicated. You know, I would rather someone who can afford to give me 500 bucks, give me 500 bucks so that I can help get, so I can get reelected so that I can support people who can't afford $10 because they need that $10 to buy their dinner that night, right? I don't want someone who doesn't have enough money for food to give me any money. I want Macy's coupons so I can buy some better shirts, right? Because they can't afford it. So, you know, again, I think people look for, often look for simple answers to think that, that that is what sums up any of us and it's not that simple. The other question is, we are in a very stressful time in our world and how much of that divisiveness then trickles down to local politics, right? And, and I think we have a, we have a, I think in our whole culture now, there is this, I'm right, you're wrong, you're evil, I'm good, I do it right, the people who support me are pure, the people who support you are horrible human beings. And I think that goes all, all the way up the chain, right? And I think we're seeing it at the local level too. And I just want to remind people, we are all local people. We see each other in the supermarket, at the grocery store. None of us are doing this because we don't care about the community. We may have different ideas about the community and what, how to solve our problems, but you don't run for local office, most of us, because you don't care. And let's give each other a little grace, a little understanding, even if we strongly disagree with each other and actually not assume evil intentions in, in the people who we're serving with or are trying to serve with.
Well, that, that brings us to our final question. We'll jump right to you and fantastic segue, Mark. But, you know, as we look at our kind of national climate of political violence, of political polarization, much of it is coming to the local level as well. And although at the beginning of this forum, we all agreed, I think, I can just safely say that 100% of the candidates are left of center in some regard, you know, at least on national politics. There is still an increased amount of division, polarization. I think some of that is exacerbated by the groups and organizations that represent these issues. But right here, right now, we're practicing civility and, you know, we're finding common ground. And so my question for you, it's kind of wrapped this form, is how do we address the rising political tension and polarization, not just nationally, but here at home? And what kind of temperament do you, do we need from our leaders in order to have those difficult conversations?
Well, there's.
Sure, you wanna go first?
Okay, but yeah, I, well, I think, I think it isn't right or left nationally. I think it's off the charts. It's not even on a, on a, on a, on a poll at all. But, so, yeah, I, I think that, you know, we're gonna have to deal with this guy in, in Washington and he's, he's gonna pop up in different ways and he has, he's weaponizing the federal government to prod us to go in directions we may not go. So I think that from a local standpoint, we need to resist our, that, that type of, those type of values within ourselves as we communicate with each other and we negotiate with each other. The question is, is how do we resist somebody with such power and has, has, has the purse strings and enforcement? And that's, we're gonna have to band together, I think, and really figure that one out because it's a real tough problem.
And I'll just interject. I think that was a fantastic answer, but I think we can all agree that there's problems at the federal level. What I'm really curious about in this question is how do we address the division within our city?
I'll just say, you know, you'll say fight fire with fire. Truth is, you fight fire with water. And I, I sometimes, it disturbs me when I hear people giving very, very, you know, strong, strong opinions about this and that. And then, oh, let's just fight back and give equally strong opinions. You realize all that's gonna do is just have a big fire going on all, all day long, you know? Sometimes you have to diffuse these things, whatever. You know, and even on the national politics level, sometimes you, it pays to actually try and understand where the other person's coming from. I mean, I, I have two living brothers, both of whom voted for Donald Trump. I, I would never vote for Donald Trump, but these are my brothers too. So I wanna, I want them to explain to me, just tell me what you find attractive, whatever, and I'll try and explain to them here. But I'm not gonna sort of say, you're not my brother anymore. I'm not gonna do that, you know, and I just think.
What does Thanksgiving look like?
We don't really go. It's not because you think, we just, we just live in faraway places, you know? But I, I just, I just think that sometimes just arguing through and pushing back, whatever, is, is not the right way. Sort of, there's gotta be some sort of a third way to approach this, you know, which is really more how do you diffuse the differences? I think most Americans are, know that definitely you really get down to it, you know? Even those who voted this way versus the other way ultimately. And I just, I have enough faith in my country and, and the people in this country that sooner or later, we're gonna find a way out of this.
Now's the time that we need to come together as community. We have to really think about what does it mean to be a community member, to be, to respect and just support your neighbor, right? And I think this is something that I've said on the council a couple of times in comments around like the divisiveness. Some of that we kind of need to put aside because we need to band together in these other issues. When ICE is showing up at schools or showing up in our community or whatever that looks like, folks need to be coming together to support individuals and families and not like, oh, well, you supported and voted on that issue, you're not my friend. Well, on this issue, we need to be coming together. And I think this is where I also just channeled Dr. King on a beloved community. It's not really, in this moment, we're not feeling that coming from the top. So on the local level where we do have some control, we need to band together and be like, let's be community. So when folks are seeing, say, ICE out in our community, they're dialing in, they're letting people know. Even if we're talking about just food insecurity or other things, right, that's also impacting many of our neighbors. We're trying to band together, find food, find shelter, find clothing, whatever it is for our, 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 our community member. What is happening in Washington and the way it is trickling down, we also need to have faith in our leaders, who we elected to be in those seats too, to continue to represent us to the best of their abilities because they are challenged in a way that is hard, like really hard. When I think of Congressman Clark or Presley or, you know, Warren and Markey, you know, when I think of those folks who are literally sitting in Washington and have to be at the table making some of those hard decisions and having colleagues who really are on the opposite end of the spectrum from where they are, that is not where we are as a local body. So again, while we might disagree on some things, we can really band together on so much more. And I think on these particular issues, we need community more than anything else right now.
I'll sort of try to maybe bring this, bring my answer back to some of the PAC stuff and the slates and, and all that kind of stuff. It's gonna take a community, it's gonna take all of us to bring even the temperature down locally, right? We are elected. We want to continue doing our jobs because we feel that they're important and that we have something to offer the community. And so we are susceptible to constituencies and, you know, how things swing. And I actually think, you know, when you go back and you, you, you think about some of the more divisive or, you know, some of the more difficult conversations that have happened, I'm not sure it's always the council that's being the divisive ones, right? I mean, I think a, a way, you know, sort of Community Organizing 101 will, will, you know, the way you get people to get involved in your organization is often to scare them, to get them fired up about something. And I'm not saying which, I'm not picking which one of these, there are some of the organizations that support me, sometimes put out information that isn't exactly correct, but, or is meant to get people fired up. Some of the organizations that don't support me do the exact same thing. And they have a lot of influence. And so I wanna just say to everybody, you know, not just the council, you know, being, needing to, to listen and more and, and. But we need, like, these organizations, you know, when you put out a flyer that says, you know, if you don't support X, then you don't care about, you know, Y, and create that sort of, you know, you're with us or against us kind of thing, that doesn't help, right? Or you put out a, you know, a flyer that says, if this passes, there's gonna be a 20-story building on this little tiny side street when that is not what the ordinance is calling for. That doesn't help. It, again, it goes back to most of the people. I always think of like, well, how, I used to say my grandmother, but she passed away. But, you know, how does my stepmother hear this, right? She's kind of involved, not totally involved, saw a bunch of listservs, gets information, but she'll call me and be like, oh my God, I got this thing, you know, this, 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 this email saying that, you know, if you guys pass this, then, you know, you're gonna start, like, there's gonna be 40-story buildings all over again. I'm like, no, that's not what it, that's not what we're doing. You know, here's what the language is. And, and so we have to make sure that we're not throwing fuel on the fire, but we need the people who are out there, the community leaders that are out there to also not throw fuel on the fire. And if we do that and we all say, look, we're gonna try and have, you know, honest, tough, complex conversations that may get heated at times because we're, people are opinionated, right? We're the most opinionated zip code, right? Pick a zip code. We have five women in Cambridge or whatever. We're all the most opinionated zip code. I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, but we don't have to make it worse. And I think this is where we really need the help of some of these other folks that are out there to help bring the temperature down and not increase it. And so we all have to be in community together and doing that. That's really something we want to accomplish.
I wanted to bring it back to City Councilor Joan Pickett again. I, I feel like her, one of her legacies on her, during her service on the council, was bringing civility to the council. And I feel as though, I think, I feel like that's really lived on. I think all of us, she was very respectful and I think all of us are trying to behave really, really well and be cooperative colleagues. And I, I think she was our model. I think she, she set the, set the bar for the council. And I, I feel lucky that, again, I'm on the council and that she set that bar. One of the things that I've been trying to do to, to do is bring in experts in committee meetings to broaden conversations. So I've done that with the Neighborhood and Long-Term Planning Committee and I've done that with the Transportation Committee. And I feel as if, again, as a museum curator, like my goal was always to understand an idea and then to communicate it, communicate it well. So I, I feel like often the tension lies in our not, and also I led brainstorming sessions forever to, with experts, to finally get to a crystal clear idea. Like when we, when in organizing exhibition ideas and themes, we would have with experts, like scholars from all over the country, we might have four meetings and it wouldn't be until that fourth meeting that the idea crystallized and, and we actually had a, like a good idea that was worthy of advancing. So I, I feel like bringing in experts and broadening the conversation is one way to just end up with better solutions and policies to advance. Community-wise, I agree, I feel like the city does a great job with dance parties, with Meet Your Neighbor Day, with so many events, public events that bring people together. I feel like food. I feel like food, the arts, these are things we must invest in and gathering opportunities so that neighbors interact with one another.
And beer, and beer.
Beer, beer could be great, too.
Night market tonight.
I'll be at the beer.
But I, I feel like all of those things bring the community together. So those are things that I think we have to continue to really invest in. They're critical to our DNA and to being a vital community. And I, I have confidence, um, and I think we have to help one another. I was just talking to the city manager about a public campaign on, you know, courtesy and helping your neighbor. I think we all really have to make more of an effort to help our neighbors. I don't think we can rely just on social services, existing organizations in the city to to serve all our elders and young, lots of people are feeling isolated. We need to reach out to, everyone needs to reach out to somebody. And if we all did that little bit, um, the world would be a better place. So I think just to build it, we need to be connecting. I'm, I'm going to my neighborhood street party tonight. I, I just feel like those little events make all the difference in the world for the culture of the city, and I think we need to continue to foster them. I, I think the city's actually pretty great at that, but I think we really need to be doing more of that going forward.
On that note, I'd like to close out.
Motion to adjourn.
Couple more minutes left. If we could go around and have people shout out a business or an organization that they feel is producing something brilliant or needs some attention. If there's a, if there's a business that's struggling and people don't know that that service is out there, let's call it out. If there's a delicious food, Kathy, do you have something?
I was just gonna say, I love Somerville Cambridge Elder Services. That group does extraordinary service for our elders. They provide visits to the doctors. They have someone just come and talk to them. They do health checks. They provide insurer. They are an extraordinary resource for this community, and we should be engaging them more and more in our CHA properties and just uh they're doing miracle work.
See, there's always one that sets a very high-minded tone when someone else is gonna say, oh, the chocolate chip cookies are delicious. But yeah, that's very nice. Mark?
Now I gotta think of something like No, I mean, I mean, no, the, I mean, the hard part is, I mean, we have so many nonprofits in 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 our community when they're doing incredible things. I mean, it's just, you know, I can't pick, you know, one.
Which is why it can be anything.
Right? So, well, I'll put on a plug for Bagellosaurus. My sister-in-law, um, so go there. They're great. And uh, I don't know, I mean, I, I think, I think that, that, I guess if I had to sort of, I guess I don't have to, but one organization that I think does a lot, has a lot of sort of tentacles, although I don't know if that's a
A big reach.
A big reach.
Because tentacles are kind of gross, and so, I mean, that's the wrong term, um, is CEOC. You know, because everything from helping people with their taxes to food security, to housing, to, you know, they're an organization that um just, again, touches people in a lot, uh, in a lot of different ways, so I love them. But yeah, I think, I think we have a, we have a great nonprofit network, which needs a lot more support, especially now with funding cuts and things that they're facing. So I'll just shout out, you can pick, there's a hundred different nonprofits you could, you could choose to support, everything from writing a check to showing up and helping them, you know, at an event or whatnot, but just do something.
Nik, are you sticking with your original from the last session or are you gonna?
I'll go last again, so please.
Okay, well, I'm gonna repeat mine. It's just because I'm like, lack of imagination.
Did we not get to give our favorites?
We're going around in a circle. Don't worry, don't worry.
I was just gonna say that uh I almost accidentally had Simon's Hot Chocolate a couple of weeks back, and it was amazing.
There you go.
Um, Bread Gourmet, black-owned business on Main Street. Really struggling right now, um, given they're one year in. And they even sent us an email regarding um the implementation, unfortunately, of bike lanes and but it has now made it so that there are no meters on that street of Main Street. So folks who may not be Cambridge residents, who are coming in to visit, have, it's really a struggle to find parking. Um, and they are finding it really hard to think about what staying in Cambridge looks like, being one year in Cambridge as a black-owned business.
I love burgers. I will have bread tonight.
Fantastic.
Hey, Mary.
Well, I'm gonna put a plug in for the Central Square Business Improvement District. Uh, and first note that how, even when we're all crazy under COVID, that those were the folks who gave us a lot of hope. And they created Starlight Square. And Starlight Square, as we knew it, is gone. But the thing is, they're quietly behind the scenes right now recreating Starlight Square within the old Revolution Clinic's building. And then we'll be ribbon cutting, I think, in uh mid-October for an indoor venue that'll essentially be Starlight Square indoors, 3.0. Even the daily table, which closed, is gonna be recreated in the space which was Hilton Ten City. And there's a lot of, I mean, when they created the Business Improvement District some years ago, a lot of things they said, oh, we're gonna take care of the cleaning up and doing this and that. But these, all these, I remember speaking to it then, there's all these intangible things marrying potential you know, spaces to things that people needed, whatever, that are all happening quietly behind the scenes right now. So if anybody's been feeling pessimistic about the vacant storefronts in Central Square, and I was feeling very pessimistic.
There's like twelve.
There is more than that. You can start to maybe entertain a little optimism because I think we're moving in the right direction. And a lot of credit goes to Michael Monastim and Brian and Eric and all the other people associated with the bid, who are really, really trying to take care of the square.
And once the plaza's done, they're gonna be doing some programming.
That's right. And and by the way, right after we finish up here, I'm going over to the night market.
Night market again.
Have a few beers with Mike.
I'm excited about Jersey Mike's, as I should.
And they're opening up.
Lastly?
Yeah, I think, um, I'm a small business fan, so I think that, you know, I'm not gonna pick one. I think you should, people should really get out and and and, you know, go out and use your small businesses, participate with them, get to know your, your business owners all over the city. I enjoy each of the places in my neighborhood. I go in, I know everyone by name. They know me. And but, and you should really go out because they are precious, there, there are diversity. They're part of our culture, and we really need to nurture them. Even though we have empty storefronts, let's get them going and maybe more will come, so.
Can I say one more? Patty's Lunch. Sorry, I know you don't want me to say Patty's Lunch. Go get a beer next week, even now, today, every day, but next week when it is the five K, next Sunday.
I think we can all agree on that one. The first time around, I give a shout out to our student athletes. A little biased here as a coach. But this time around, I'm gonna give a shout out to all the people behind the camera and the laptops with us from both the Cambridge Day and CCTV. And so on behalf of both organizations, we thank you guys for coming out, contributing to this dialogue. And we look forward to continuing these conversations in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.